Workshop for roles and responsibilities and Jerry Doll will be presenting. And I'll let him introduce himself before we get going. And thank you, Jerry, for providing these services for the town.
Sure, happy to, happy to be here. I don't have a gallery view, so I can't see everyone. And I've already started sharing the screen and I don't want to screw it up and find that I've disconnected myself. So if you don't mind, I'll just leave the screen share up. But I really appreciate the opportunity to spend some time with you tonight. And, and I know that with any luck, we've got a couple of board of trustee members here. Martin Landers, as you know, and I are working on the update of the land use code, which you have seen some versions of, and you will be seeing more of. And I know you've been commenting on some of the drafts. Tonight isn't about the code, of course. Tonight is a workshop on roles and responsibilities for the planning commission itself. And how do we define our role? What are our powers? What are the limitations on those powers? And, and how should we best use, wear that hat? I've spent a lot of time with local government officials. I've spent my whole career since 1976 going to public meetings of planning commissions, boards of county commissioners, boards of trustees, city councils. And as you'll see later, I've, I've developed a strong opinions about really how we can best conduct meetings that produces the product that we're, it is our job to produce. And we don't often think about our jobs as producing a product. When you're in a company, you produce a product. It's, you're producing glass containers for, for, for use in the home. You're producing dog food, you're producing shelves. Government produces products too. And the planning commission board trustees in the land use arena produce the product of the regulation of land use for the protection of all of the public health, safety and welfare. Before there was zoning and before there was subdivision review, I could build a tannery next to your house and operate it 24/7 with all of the smells, et cetera, that were tenet upon that. And you had no remedy because I owned that property. I could whatever I wanted with it. There were no zoning restrictions. Product that we produce as members of planning commissions, boards of trustees and land use is to produce a, a clean and safe environment within which we can all live, work and play and, and stay largely out of each other's way and have uses that are largely compatible each with the other. So we can still accomplish all we want to accomplish just in the right place and in the right way. Would that it were all that simple when it comes to, to you in an individual application for a PUD? But bear in mind that the product you're producing is, is safety and, and a good public sphere for an ability for all of us to live and work together. And without your doing that, we have the situation I described to begin with. We'd have the tannery next to your house. And everyone today would say, well, of course, that's, you can't do that. The reason that can't be done is the zoning codes we have now. That's the only reason that can't take place. So it's an important product that you all produce and I wanted to emphasize that. Before I start the outline, there's one other thing I want to emphasize. And that is how much I appreciate what you do. The staff that's attending today and myself and Martin and everyone else that works on these things for you, by and large, are paid to do this work. And I love my work and I'm so glad. About the privilege, but it is my job and I'm of course am paid. You aren't. And all you get are the occasion, even for the pandemic, even then, all you got were some occasional probably pop in the back of the room and the occasional snack. You weren't paid for this and instead you do this for love of your community and as a public service. And, and throughout my whole career, I've been enormously appreciative and amazed at the amount of time and effort that people like you spend producing this product for no money back to you, for no compensation back to you. And often you make a decision and at least half the people in the room don't like it. So you don't even get that many compliments, but you're getting one from me. And I want you to know how much we really all value work that you do and the role you play. So having said that, let's, let's go ahead and go through this outline. And what I will do, we've got two hours. What I will do is break three, four times at sort of logical points to take some questions rather than take them all the way through. But we'll have some places where there'd be a good spot to take questions on what we've just looked at. And then I recognize you've all probably got specific things that are of concern to you and note those down and have them under your elbow because we'll have at least a half hour, if not more, at the end of the formal outline to just take any questions you've got, sort of stump the experts. And, and with any luck, you can stump me and that'd be great. So let's go ahead and just dive into it. As you see, this is an outline that I've, I've used in a number of other locations for various purposes. And I've adjusted it a little bit for you. I had a good conversation with your chair and that has informed some of the things that are in this outline. As well, it's informed by the fact that I represent a number of cities. I'm the city or town attorney for four different cities at the moment. And with their permission, I'll, I'll use some examples of good things and bad things I've seen elsewhere. So first we look at your role and what is it? It's really set up by the corridor by statutes. You are a statutory town and so you are limited and empowered by the statutes. The statute that's cited here right at the beginning is the statute that gives you power. It says you do two things. Prepare and submit to the board trustees a comprehensive plan. You see the cop plan irregularly, but it's a, you know what the cop plan is. It's an important legislative document that guides the community. You also review matters assigned by the land use code. You know, that's the bulk of your work. You look at rezoning applications, you look at PUD applications, you look at site plans, you look at subdivision. And largely you make recommendations to the board of trustees. In most cases, you're not the final stop. In the new code, there will be a couple of places, I think, where you are the final stop and your decision is the final binding one. But under the present code, you're not the final stop, I think, except for a few minor things. But your role is important. You're making a recommendation to the board of trustees. And, and I'll make another point in a minute about your role around that. But probably 90% of you do, of what you do is project specific reviews. That's why 90% of this outline and 90% of what I'm going to talk about is your role when you do that. So you're appointed by the board trustees. There are a couple of things relevant to your, your appointment. I was the town attorney for the town of Silverthorne for 25 years. And what the mayor would always ask applicants for planning commission, before the board would, trustees up there would appoint those applicants would be, do you have the time to do this work? Will you be able to actually read the packet before the meeting and be prepared? No pejorative if you aren't, but that, that's the job. That's what is involved here. Do you have the time to do the work? And I, I thought that was a really important question for that mayor to ask. Everyone always said yes, but I think what the mayor was signaling to them is that this is important work that you can't just do on the fly. If you're going to take this on, it's expected that you'll, you'll put in the time to be prepared for the meetings. Are you able to set aside your personal views? Hugely important. When you act on individual projects, you're acting as judges. It's a lawsuit judicial matter and we'll get into that in detail in a minute. But it also means that you set aside your personal views and you are acting as an agent of the community and a member of the commission, of course, out in the real world. And I know we all have personal views. And that's, that's not so bad. That helps to inform what we know. Our experiences help to inform that, but it's important to wear a slightly different hat. And remember, you're wearing a slightly different hat. I'll have a lot of detail on that in a minute because it's important to me. There are some consequences when you say yes to the appointment. You know, you give up, is it Tuesday nights, Wednesday nights? You give that up. I haven't seen TV on Monday or Tuesday nights in decades. So I have no idea what's on TV because I've given that up. And of course you do too. One of the things though, that, that you get something and you give something. And that's what this line item here is saying. You, what you give up is the right to sort of comment on the same application as a citizen. What you get is the right to do more than comment. You get the right to vote on that application. And that's hugely important. It's a, it's a good deal. You make a deal here where you said, you give up some rights to say, well, as a citizen, I feel this way. As a planning commissioner is the role that you're taking on. It does alter your public comment rights. I actually had a planning commissioner in a, to be unnamed city a long time ago. That, okay, fine, he's sitting on the commission. There's an application. The applicant goes through the application, so it's the staff. Now it's time for public comment. Commissioner, his plan was to get up and go down and stand at the podium and give testimony as a citizen. And then he was going to come back up and sit on the commission and, and wear that other hat. And I had to say, Keith, no, you, you have to, you can't do that. So you do give up, you give up that role. But as I said, you get something in return. The last point here is that you can act only as a group. Individual commissioners don't speak for the commissions. The commission as a whole that speaks to the commission. And if there's a majority vote, you're on the losing side. That's how it is. The commission's recommendation is what you signed up for. When the Colorado Court of Appeals judges, there's always three on a panel. When they, when they vote on something, if it's two to one, it, the persons who, the two persons who voted for or against, to uphold or not, whatever decision is supported, that's the binding vote of that court. And the same is true for you. Talking about the scope of view development applications down. And we'll have again, more of this. Some of these themes are going to be repeating, I promise. What I see a lot is this kind of role clarity. It's the applicant that's in charge of its application, not the commission. I recognize that a poorly written application cries out to be fixed. Resist that, resist that temptation. It's the applicant in charge of their, their application. They had their reasons for doing things or not doing things. And you're not the applicant. You're the reviewing body and it's not your task to fix an application. We'll talk about conditions in a minute. But it's not your, your job to fix the application and, and it's theirs. If it's, an application is not fixable. If it's a bad application, instead of fixing it, it's available to you to, to recommend no. And I think that that's vitally important where you, you just don't like something. You're trying to figure out how to rework it. It's perfectly appropriate to say, no, this is, this is a flawed application. And our, my recommendation, the motion I'm going to make, Mr. Chairman, is to recommend disapproval to the board of trustees. That's a door that's available to you that I'm not saying you should use all the time, but use it instead of trying to fix and rework a defective application because you're not the applicant, you're not the property owner. And they get, they have the right to do what they've done. They've got the right to make mistakes and to the responsibility to, to have to live with them. As I've said here, you have to stay within the limits of the code and the cop plan. And this bears not only on saying yes, no to things, but also to conditions. The, the code will establish specific requirements for review of applications. Those are the requirements you apply, not other requirements that would be good ones, but they're not in the code. Not your personal requirements that you feel strongly about, but that aren't in the code. They have to be in the code or in the comprehensive plan. Political, financial issues. I, I had a planning commission member on one city that would always ask, well, what's the, what's the price point going to be for these units? Price point of the units is irrelevant to the planning commission's review of an application in that city. And I tried for a long time and I think probably failed to get that guy to stop asking that question because it just simply wasn't relevant to his job. It was very important to him and he was very interested in it. And I get it that that community wanted to make sure there was more affordable housing. They didn't have an affordable housing ordinance that they could apply that would have given them the reason to ask that question. And, and so I, I had that battle with him and I don't know how well I succeeded, but, but I want to give you that example. That's one that says, you know, the, your code and the comprehensive plan limit your role. And financial, political issues aren't your ballgame. And your ballgame is to make a recommendation to the board of trustees. And we all live in the real world and we know that the board sometimes looks at things differently. That's why there's two boards. It's why there's you and the board of trustees. And sometimes they'll go a different direction than you did. And that's okay. If they always had to vote the way you had recommended, then there's no point in having board of trustees or there's no point in having a planning commission. And I don't mean to be flip. I think a real important role for the planning commission is this. Planning commission exclusively looks at land use applications. When it gets to the board of trustees on any given agenda that night, they're approving the purchase of police vehicles. They're approving the budget. They're dealing with the personnel issue brought to them by the manager. They're dealing with a police matter. They're thinking about whether or not a bridge needs to be rebuilt or they can afford to do it. They're dealing with citizen complaints on nuisance stuff that's coming in. And they're looking at one of the projects that you recommended approval or disapproval of. The point I'm making is that they don't have as much time as you do on individual land use projects. And they rely on you and should rely on you for a much more in-depth review of a land use project. And that's why you have real value to them. And their job and your job are slightly different and there's a reason for that. Anyhow, let's look at some of the land use regulatory tools that you have. These are pretty standard. If I'm doing the right thing, I'll be able to, there we go. Everybody can see that. If you can't see the screen I'm talking about at any point in time, please interrupt me or have Debbie interrupt. I'm down a room number two, standard land use regulatory tools. Planning, you know that you have that as a regulatory tool. You have the power to do that. The one thing you don't have power to do or the one source of power you don't have is a charter because you're a statutory community, you don't have a home rule charter. But statutes and your land use code give you authority to review and recommend on a, on the comprehensive plan. The plan isn't a regulation itself. It's not the same as the code unless it gets adopted as a code. There are a couple of cases there. I actually was involved in that Theobald case up in Summa County. And the county adopted a new cop plan that identified activity centers and said, this is where we think commercial activity ought to take place. And that's the cop plan, remember, it wasn't zoning. The Theobalds, a longtime family in Summa County, brought a lawsuit saying you've downzoned us with this plan. They lost that case in the Colorado Supreme Court because Supreme Court said, no, the plan isn't regulatory. It's a plan, it's a guide. You should have waited Theobalds to file your lawsuit until the county had enacted zoning that you didn't like. And then you're welcome to challenge that. So that's the distinction between the plan and the zone. Now, there's no question. Cop plan is a guide for you. Code does say, the old code and the one Martin and I are working on, says that you, that the development should be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so you have the plan under your elbow when you apply code standards. But it's not like it's a set of zoning regulations. Let's talk about zoning. Tool structure is this in your structures, basically this under the present code and under the new code. You have traditional zoning, zone districts, commercial, residential, industrial. Have uses by right, additional or special uses. I think we're going to end up with the design meter, I think it's going to be special uses in the new code. But special and conditional use is very much the same. It's a use that might be okay in a zone district if it's conducted in a particular way. And that's one of the few places that conditions are more available to you. But that's, that's, those are the tools you have is the traditional zone. Let's talk about eligibility of a property for zoning or rezoning, which are many of the applications you see. I want to rezone this from open space or from ag to commercial. Or I want to rezone it to PUD and allowing the following uses. Classic tests for rezoning. Now interesting, the present code doesn't have very many tests. It just says that map can get amended. Martin and I have added some pretty specific tests to judge whether an application for rezoning should be approved. And these are very similar to what other jurisdictions use. These are really classic, but they're important. And when you think about it, they make sense. Has there been a change in the character of the neighborhood? As we all know, along commercials, along a street that's slowly becoming commercialized, that's a change in conditions, isn't it? And 20 years ago, that, that end of the street was still residential. But you know, the development's been creeping in that direction and the houses have been slowly replaced with dental offices and, and stores. And so now you're on the edge of that. It's still a residence, but right next door, it's commercial. Neighborhood's changing. Will the rezoning be compatible with the land uses in the neighborhood? Sort of another way of saying the first thing when you think about it. Will it bring it into conformance with the cop plan? Recent amendment to the cop plan said, you know, this area really needs to be high density or higher density. That might be opposed by some people, but one of the standards is what's the cop plan say about this property? Was there an error in the original zoning? Four years of working on this or 45, I've seen maybe twice where there's been an error in the zoning that needs to get fixed with a rezoning. What are the impacts of the rezoning on traffic and safety? And those are standards that you will see in the new code. Another tool you have, of course, is subdivision and site planning. And now we've got the zoning, zoning's residential, let's make up a number five, dwelling units per acre. And that's the base zoning. Now I've come in with a subdivision plat and site plan to, to develop that. And I'm going to show you exactly where the roads are. I'm going to show you where the utilities go, et cetera. That's the subject for subdivision and site plan. I'm going to show you what dedication requirements, how, how wide the roadway is going to be. I'm going to secure the construction and public improvements, water, sewer, et cetera. Here's where, what that isn't though, as I've put here. It's not the zoning step. We already did that. We already decided in zoning, that's five dwelling minutes per acre. The time when you get to subdivision is not to decide what the uses or the density is, but it will happen all the time. I'm the city attorney for the city of Wheat Ridge. That's an inner ring suburb on the west side of the city of Denver. It's surrounded by other cities, largely, there's a few places where it can annex. It has a fair amount of infill. It's the carnation city and it's so named because it used to have a lot of greenhouses where carnations got raised. And those greenhouses are going away. And now you have the two and three acre parcels that have been fields for now a long time. And, but they have been zoned and they have zoning of a, of a given density, but they've just never been built out. And we're seeing some of those infill parcels now come in for subdivision review. And the neighbors say, wait a minute, we think that that use is inappropriate for that property. We want it to remain a grassy field. Well, zoning for that property got changed however many years ago. All we're doing now is deciding how that zoning gets built. And it is a mistake to view the subdivision process as another bite at the zoning apple. That got done already. For better or for worse, it's already that zone designation. And now you are designing and shaping the built environment that is a use by right allowed by that previous. You will get tempted and you will be gassed to unwind the zoning decision by saying no to the subdivision because it's too dense. That's the wrong reason to say no. There may be other reasons, but they have to be based on the subdivision code standards for the design of the streets, for example, and how the setbacks are set up. That's the distinction between zoning and subdivision. We also, of course, planned unit development. That's a major tool here in, in Monument. You have a lot of zoning right now and after the new codes in place that will be a planned unit development. And that's a flexible district, as you well know, you kind of combine subdivision and zoning a little bit with planning developments, kind of its own little mini zoning district. It's pretty handy. It, when it's done right, it actually can work, can work very well. So tell me if I'm changing pages, I think I am, all right? PUD eliminates the need for variances too, because of course you designed your own little special zoning district. Talk about conditional and special uses. And again, I forget, maybe Debbie can tell me whether it's presently it's called conditional or is it presently called special, Debbie? I think it's.
Presently, used by special review.
Used by special review, okay. And I think, I, I think we preserve that term. If we haven't, it's conditional. But as I mentioned earlier, it's the same thing. Uses which may be compatible, but we don't know. If you've got a use by right, it's determined to be compatible. My residential house next to yours is a, determined to be a compatible use. But a special use, a use by special review on, on my property, who knows, might be what, what would a potentially compatible use next door to residential be? Not much, maybe, maybe veterinary, veterinary hospital with no outside dog runs. Maybe it'd be a conditional use next to residential, maybe next to higher density residential. That's what I'm saying, which is that it might be compatible, but maybe not. And in fact, in Wheat Ridge, we did get an application for veterinary hospital. And the, the application was approved with the condition that there be no outside dog runs, no outside runs at all, because that was felt to be incompatible with the adjacent multifamily apartment building. So you can see now, can't you, how conditional or special use review can work? So it's, it's a use that you've got to come in and ask for. And again, you look at how to make it compatible with adjacent, adjacent properties. Meanwhile, it still has to apply with the requirements of the code, be consistent with the cop plan, et cetera. These are standards that are in your present code, 1772040, that you apply when you see these applications. Before I get to exactions, conditions, which is kind of its own little arena, questions about the role of the planning commission generally, conditional, special use, zoning, rezoning, subdivision by themselves. I don't, I don't have a gallery view, so I can't see people waving.
I have a couple of questions for you. This is Steve King.
Hi, Steve.
Hi. Okay, so as you know, our, our zoning code is, is pretty outdated and pretty loosely written. And we currently don't have PUDs, but I feel like almost everything that comes to us is almost like a PUD because the zoning doesn't really spell out what can and can't go in some of these zones. And so everything is really, is, is a zoning change, even if it's the same use that goes in there. So we also have this thing called a sketch plan where applicants will come to us and they will say, we want to put in 150 units, let's just say, on this property. And, and they get approval for it kind of based on, I'll just use like an example. So say there's 100 acres of property. And somebody comes in and says, we want to put in 100 units on this 100 acres. So that's one per acre when you're looking at it. But then, once they get the, the final plat put together, it, it'll say there's 50 acres that are unbuildable for flood plains or we have trouble mouses here, whatever it is. So now that plan that got approved for one unit per acre is now two units per acre. And everybody on the commission, well, I'm not going to speak for everybody else. I feel like since they got approved for that many units per acre, it's still that many units per acre, but there's a lot of unbuildable acreage there. So it changes the composition of, of the streetscape and the density and the lot sizes and all that. I know that, you know, pretty soon we will have a remedy for that after the code is redone. But in the meantime, how best to handle that? Say, say, you know, they, they're approved for that many units, but now the site plan has changed and, and it doesn't really blend with the city anymore. How do we handle that?
Well, a couple of ways. Let's remember that was sketch plan, so they're going to have to come back, right?
Right.
And as I said earlier, you always have as I said earlier, you always have the ability to say no, don't you?
Uh, well, do we have the ability to say no, though, if they're approved for a certain amount of units?
Well.
Sketch plan.
You have to let me answer the question.
Oh, sorry about that.
Um, uh, let's remember sketch is one step of several or a couple at least now. And I think at least a couple in the new new scheme of things. And uh, you know, at sketch plan review, you're right. You're looking at things at kind of a thirty thousand foot level, right? Uh, but as you get further into it, if it turns out that it can't meet the code based upon the code requirements for setback, for example, for that kind of product. If it can't meet, if a hundred units aren't going to fit because the code requires setbacks, et cetera, and once you do the math, you're not going to be able to get a hundred units. You're only going to be able to get fifty on the developable portion. Saying yes to sketch planet at a hundred units over a hundred acres doesn't mean that you've said yes to two units per acre on fifty acres if the setback requirements in that zone district won't allow that math. Now, uh, I'm probably not answering your question as as well as I could, but I don't view a sketch plan approval as, okay, now we're done on this project.
Well, currently, currently, we um, I'm not, I'm not aware of any minimum lot sizes necessarily. So and until we get this code rewrite done, the I don't know what code issues we would use to deny that. If if, let's just say there there is no minimum lot size. How do we address that part of it? Um, because we're really kind of flying blind a little bit since we we don't really have a lot of precedent for some of this stuff.
Okay, we're, I'm sorry that I'm having trouble wrestling with your question because I I guess what I'm hearing is I don't uh, think that the project should move forward if in later stages of review the density is going to increase as a result of us learning that some of the property is unbuildable. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm asking. I just want to know how, I I mean, I don't want to put the, I don't want to put the town in any, you know, any legal um, ramifications from from a decision. So I try to think these things through and um, you know, we're in the middle of a code rewrite right now.
Yeah, yeah. Well, uh, let's do this. Uh, I I'm I'm usually, I've usually got absolutely the right answer for every question, but guess what? I'm human. And uh, I don't always have the right answer. This question may lend itself frankly to having to learn all about or a lot more about that particular application than we have time for.
Okay, then let me ask you a real easy question, a real easy question, Ben.
He says, everybody who says it's easy, you heard him say that. Okay, I'm ready.
No, this one is easy. Okay, so again, almost everybody that comes to us is is coming for a zoning change. We have, first off, we have a lot of industrial property that's zoned here. Um, and some of it is got by height allowances on it. And so when they come to us, they come wanting to add residential. So if you change that property from the current zoning to a different zoning, um, I'm assuming, I I used to be on another planning commission in Inglewood, so we came across this stuff all the time.
I've got the answer already.
It's a little bit.
The new zone district height standards are what apply, not the old ones.
Okay, but if there isn't any height standards necessarily, um, i- is it, is it a matter of? I guess I look at it this way, y- you you come in and you ask us for something extra, then we get to negotiate down something that we want to negotiate down, correct?
Well, I don't really agree with that. If it's, if it's rezoning, okay, it's rezoning, you're zoning, you're going from one zone district to another. A good code, and even your existing code, and certainly the one Martin and I are writing, has standards for what uses are allowed and what the constraints on those uses are. And what, so when you move from zone A to zone B, you've got, you have applied for zone B, and that means you've agreed to the conditions of zone B in the code. And what you can't do, so you know, uh, I would like to impose an additional standard on this project that's not in the code. Uh, you don't get to in in the zoning world and rezoning world, write additional zone district standards that aren't in the code on an individual project. And you say, well, how can we fix that? Answer to that is, there has to be an ordinance run to say, okay, in the industrial district, the new, the height standards are this or that. You don't get to like create a code standard or one doesn't exist. And that's, I feel strongly about that. And I do see people try every now and again, missions or boards try to say, well, standards that apply here aren't quite what we'd like. And so we're going to add one. And no, outside of conditional uses, you don't rewrite the land use code just for that uh, project. Now, we're going to have to go on because my limit on questions till we get to the end is ten minutes per person and you've moved up your budget. So so, you know, wait till the end, there'll be more time.
All right, I'll come back to that later.
Thanks. All right, let's look at exactions, conditions, impact fees. This is kind of a perennial. Uh, and and it's important, I think, for us to remember the difference between these categories of of things that you lay on people. Uh, and a good way of thinking about it is after you've done imposing what I'll generally call a condition, who ends up owning it? A condition is a condition on property that the developer, the owner ends up owning. So for example, building height conditions, parking, access improvements. As a sound and view impact, and Wheat Ridge, there's a project that's got to build a sound wall. Actually, it's it's the Coors bottling plant's being required to build a sound wall. Well, they're being required to build it, but they end up owning their own sound wall. Same thing for landscaping, snow storage, drainage, things like that. You're required to do it as the developer, but you end up owning it. That's a condition. And it's site specific. An exaction is also site specific, but that's something the government ends up owning. So park and school dedications, uh, that's carved right off of my property's developer and I end up not owning it. Government does. Recreational facility, street improvements, obviously, end up owned owned by the government. That's an exaction. A an impact fee is different than the first two because it's not site specific. It's uh, legislatively adopted schedule of fees. Uh, the classic example is tap fees, water and sewer tap fees. If I'm building a house, I've got to pay a tap fee for single family residents at six thousand dollars a tap fee. That isn't specific to my house. Every single family house that wants a building permit is going to pay a six thousand dollar sewer tap fee. If that's the schedule of sap of tap fees that you have. Many cities will have other kinds of impact fees, for example, that that are applied on pretty much a dwelling unit basis or a square foot basis. But those are legislative, they're not specific to an individual project. They're applied individually. But they're not like saying, okay, for a condition, you need this much snow storage because of the of the nature of your project. And we really need a a culvert here. That's site specific, as you can tell, impact fee legislatively adopted applies to a broad category of property. Uh, when we're talking about uh, these kinds of of impacts, you'll notice I mentioned this Beaver Meadows case. Um, a good case to 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 say, you got to find, and you've heard me say it now once, you're probably here, you say it five more times for eight o'clock. You've got to find a basis in the code to do what it is you want to do. What you want to do might be a great thing that really ought to happen. Does the code say that? Does the code give you support to say that? If it doesn't, that's a little note you write to the boarding trustees and say, the next time you revise the code, think about adding this. But if it isn't in the code, you don't get to apply it. And that was what happened in the Beaver Meadows case. That's a Lurmer County project. Uh, it was a PUD out in the middle of the county. And uh, the county commissioner said, well, you know, we're going to have to upgrade that two lane highway, two lane county road that gets out to your development because it's going to be a lot of traffic. And so therefore, we we want you to pay a bunch of offsite road impacts and a and emergency services needed to contribute to that because of the emergency services calls are going to be having out of all these houses that are out in the middle of nowhere. And the developer challenged that and the court said, uh, the county had authority to do that if it had said so in its code. But it didn't bother to say so in its code. There was not a code section on these topics. And so you could have put that in your code generally, and then you would have had the basis. Beaver Meadows came around to apply, to impose these conditions, but you didn't stick it in the code to begin with. It's not in your base code. So you can't sort of invent that requirement for Beaver Meadows just because it has occurred to you now that you're looking at a specific project, that that would be a nice condition to have. So that's kind of illustrative in a way of a couple of themes we've already talked about here today. Uh, you often hear about Nolan and Dolan. Uh, and these are two uh, US Supreme Court cases that um, that illustrate sort of the limits of exactions and conditions on property, even when you have a code. Uh, the first one is this Dolan case that the exaction, remember, exactions are things that the government ends up owning, right? So, excuse me, Nolan, uh, the, it has to be a legitimate government interest for a condition. There has to be a government reason you're doing it. And that has to be a legitimate government interest, and it has to be reasonably related to to what it is that you try, the public good you're trying to further. So the example here, I've taken too long to get to the example. The Nolans owned a little bungalow on the California coast. The California Coastal Commission is in charge of uh, land use regulation within some number of feet from the high water line. I can't remember how far, but it's quite a bit. And this bungalow fell into that category. It was basically next to the beach. And they wanted to tear down that house and build a much bigger house. And the California Coastal Commission as a condition said, well, because it's hard for people to to get down to the beach from Colorado, from uh, California Highway one, if you've ever driven Highway one, you know, you want to get to the beach, but there's this line of houses between you and the beach and no access. And it's just a problem. You're trying to get down to the beach and drive miles before you can do that. So the California Coastal Commission said, what we want is, we want you to dedicate a right of way or an easement along the beach for this purpose. Well, wait a minute. The government interest in getting people to the beach might be legitimate, but the condition that was imposed didn't accomplish that. Letting people walk up and down the beach on your property doesn't help people get to the beach from the highway. So condition denied because there was no reasonable relationship of a condition to your asserted governmental interest. They would have been fine if they said build a pull off and some stairs and let people come down. That would have been a legitimate connection. Bringing us to Florence Dolan, who owned the A Boy Plumbing Supply Store in Tygar, Oregon. It's probably Tiggered, but I'm going to call it Tygar. She owned this plumbing supply store. And she wanted to expand the store. And Tygar said, that's fine, but a condition of the uh, the expansion, because you're going to be increasing the impervious cover is two things. We want you to dedicate to us the, an area of the creek that runs behind the store and build a trail along the creek. And the court said, eventually, when it got to the US Supreme Court, said that exaction has, is not roughly proportional to the impact. Because uh, the impact of a larger store means yes, more people coming to the store. Uh, but to begin with, most people don't go to plumbing supply stores on a bicycle or on foot. They go on in their cars. And so this trail is uh, likely not an uh, proportional to the impact of a larger store. Either it was dedication of the entire creek proportional to the amount of additional impervious cover that's going to be created as a result of your new parking lot. And so uh, approval denied or conditions denied. Now, certainly some conditions would have been appropriate. It was too big. It wasn't roughly proportional. And the Colorado uh, legislature, as you see under letter G up there, it's top page three, has enacted those same standards uh, legislatively into Colorado statutes. It's basically repeated the Nolan and Dolan cases. Uh, and a a subject that's of great interest and important to me is quasi judicial actions, ex parte contacts. Uh, and we've touched on this a little bit. You can tell, I feel very strongly about about this and kind of thinking about what our role is as judges. Not as individual citizens, but as judges, because that's the hat that you said yes to when you got appointed. Uh, you have two jobs. You have a quasi judicial role, as you can see right here, and you've got a legislative role. Legislative role is largely the plan, the uh, cop plan that we talked about. And you see the car Supreme Court here in this Chery, Chery Hills Village case kind of reflecting on the distinction between those two roles. Uh, legislative action matters of a permanent general character that's not specific to individual persons groups or really properties. It's overall, that would be the cop plan. Quasi judicial action has to do with individual properties that you're applying specific legal standards to. They're in the book. They're in the code. You're the judge and you're applying the law to a piece of property. Importantly, you don't get to make up the law. You don't get to alter the law and one uh, as a, as a judge. If uh, Martin Landers, who's probably watching this, uh, uh, if he sells me a car, which is a a bad car, and I sue him and uh, the standards for that lawsuit are I uh, I have to prove that the, you know, car emits whatever in in exhaust and does, then I win. And you folks are the judge. Uh, it would be wrong, wouldn't it, for you to move the goalposts on me and say, well, it's true that the standard in the law, Mr. Doll, is ten parts per million, but uh, we think that the standard for you ought to be five. And so you lose because your car generates more than five, and so you lose and Mr. Landers wins. That's a judge changing, changing the law. It was written not by the judge, but by the legislature. Judge doesn't have power to change the law. Only the legislature does. And I know I'm harping on this, but it's very important. And and uh, we believe, I think we forget when we're on larger boards that we still are wearing a judge's hat when we're acting on an individual application. We're not wearing a legislature's hat. Which legislature, that what's their job? Their job is to write the law and change the law and mess with it. Judges don't get to do that. They get to apply the law based on the facts of the case. And and that's, as you can see, I feel strongly about it. That's why I wanted to make the point. Well, what are the consequences of the fact that you're quasi judicial ninety percent of the time? Here's the consequences. You have to give notice and hearing to somebody before you act on their application. That's always done. The code currently provides it, we've written, provides it. Right to present witnesses and evidence and conduct public hearings all the time on on land use applications. No ex parte contacts. This is talking to people on the outside of the hearing. We'll talk about that in just a second, as you see. You can't prejudge the case for the hearings over with. And I'm want to emphasize one more time because I have the chance to, your role as a judge. Let's talk about ex parte contacts because this comes up a lot. And what is it? Contacts between applicant or opponents and a members and and you, members of the commission outside of the publicly scheduled hearings after the application's been filed. Once it's been filed, the case is at issue. You know, once I file that lawsuit against Martin, uh, it's not okay for Martin to go have a a um, a private conversation with the judge and tell the judge how bad that car was because I I'm not there. I don't get to see that or hear that. Any of us on this call would understand that that's not permitted. And the judge, the judge would not take Martin's call if that were the case. He just would not take the call and he would avoid that ex parte contact. Believe it or not, you're the judges yeah, on a rezoning case, on any application that's been filed. You can't take the call. And the call, of course, is people bumping into you in the vegetable aisle at the grocery grocery store and saying, you know, I here's how I think you ought to vote on on this application. And uh, it's hard. And, uh, it's hard to avoid that, much harder than it is for the judge. So your job in avoiding ex parte contacts is a lot harder than the judge's is, because you know these people. And they see you more as just people they ought to be able to communicate with. And they don't really understand that you're, because you're not wearing a robe, not in a courtroom. So they don't understand that this is an ex parte contact that you can't have. So, um, why should you avoid it? For the very good reason that it's fair. It's fairness to the applicant, the land use applicant, developer applicant. Like or not like developers, they have rights, the property owners, they have rights. They have the right to hear what's gonna be said about their application in that hearing. They have the right to be able to hear that and to rebut that. And they have the right to know that you will not be getting that evidence outside of their hearing. Because it's only fair that they, that we all hear this at, at the same time and the consequences uh, as severe as invalidating the action of the commission, if it's clear that there was a lot of ex parte contacts that took place, didn't get disclosed. So how can you avoid this? I've got a series of ways to do that. Uh, and here's how you do it. Uh, I've got sort of four doors, I think. Uh, when you're first approached and people are doing this innocently, they're not trying to cheat. Uh, they're doing it innocently when, when and, and you can't shut them down until you know what they're about to talk about. They might just be talking about the snowstorm last week. But when they do approach you and they say, here's, you know, what I think about that application, you say, oh, that's pending in front of the commission and I'm sorry, you know, I, I can't listen to you. It's, it's something where you gotta bring that information to the, um, to the hearing. Now, half of the time or better, they're not gonna understand that answer or want to hear it, because they'd rather be home on Wednesday night or whenever it is. And they're trying to save themselves some time. I just want to tell you. Uh, so door number two, uh, is, you know, I don't fully understand it, but, uh, the town attorney has told me that I can't, you know, speak with you. Uh, door number three is probably the best one, which is, look, I'd like to listen, but if I do, it means I'm gonna have to step down and not vote on this thing. And that appeals to their self-interest, because the reason they're talking to you is to try to influence the result. And if they learn, tell them that if you listen to them, it's, it's gonna mean I can't, I can't vote on it. I'm, I'm out of there. And that helps. Tell them, urge them to bring to, to show up at the hearing anymore. You can show up at the hearing virtually. You can email stuff in and the staff will share it. Encourage them to do that. Door number four is, I'd love to talk to you, but I think I hear my wife calling. I've gotta go. So whatever you can do to get out of the conversation early is what you need to do to avoid ex parte contacts. Same thing, of course, is true with social media, written materials and mails. You can't not receive those. So what you do is you give those to the staff right away. You don't respond to them uh, other than to say, to be polite, thank you. I'm sharing this with the staff. See you at the hearing. That's a perfectly appropriate way to deal with an email uh, or other social media that you receive. Uh, what do you do if that's happened? So if the, if, if the guy bent your ear uh, and it just took five minutes before you get him to stop bending your ear, uh, disclose that contact at the beginning of the hearing. I often do that. I, when, when my council members will come to me and say, I heard this from this person. I tried to, you know, shorten the conversation, but it wasn't very short. What do I do? And, uh, I arrange it this way. I say, uh, work with the chair. Tell the chair that you want to be recognized right at the beginning of the hearing. And get the chair to recognize you. And I'll do a little, as town attorney, I'll do a little Q and A with you. Is it true that you had a conversation with X person? Yes. Did you tell them that, that they had, they should come to the hearing? Yes. Doesn't matter if that person comes or doesn't. What we're doing here is putting a Band-Aid on. Uh, 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 what did the person tell you? Well, they told me that they opposed the application. Thank you. Do you still believe you can render an impartial decision? Yes, I can. Thank you very much. That's a Band-Aid that works. But if that person took you to lunch, uh, that's way too much to disclose. That's, that's, there's not a big enough Band-Aid for that. So you're gonna have to step down and not vote. You're gonna have to tell the chair, I'm sorry, I, Jerry Doll took me out to lunch and bent my ear on this. And so I've had too long of an ex parte contact. I'm gonna have to step down. Uh, that's rare. And so I've given you the ways to get out of it. And there's plenty of polite ways to do it and encourage people to come to the hearing. That's where all the action is. That's where they ought to bring their comments. People often ask, well, what about contact with staff? Isn't that an ex parte contact? It's not in the hearing. Perfectly appropriate, because courts use their law clerks all the time. They talk to their staff all the time. And your, the staff is there for your help. So you have questions for them ahead of the hearing. You call them, you email them. They'll answer your questions. What you can't do is use the staff as a human telephone, which is to say that, you say to the staff, can you ask the applicant if they're willing to do this? And the applicant talks to the, to the, um, to the staff and says, yes. The staff calls you up and says, here's what the applicant said. That's no different than just talking to them in person. Uh, the staff will be careful not to allow that to happen, but I wanted to encourage you to talk to the staff. Uh, staff really appreciates that. Every time I get a, I had a mayor and, uh, and Wheat Ridge was really good about, uh, calling me up ahead of time and saying, well, uh, I've got these three questions that I'd like to ask you now. Or I could just ask you and surprise you with them in the hearing. And I would uniformly say, thank you very much. I'm delighted to take those questions now, because who's kidding who? I'll, I'll do a much better job of answering it. In some cases, I want to go research. And I would do that. And the material I would get that, that mayor would get from me was so much better than, uh, it would have otherwise been if I had, uh, if he'd just, uh, surprised me with it in the hearing. I was always happy to hear from that guy. His name was Jerry. So of course I was happy to hear from him. But, uh, he was really good about uh, getting information from me ahead of the hearing. And that's why you can use your staff. That brings me to the last issue here before we take a couple more questions. And that's a prejudgment. I said early on that you're a judge. And let's remember the case I had with Martin Lander's in the car. We, you, everyone would agree that it would be wrong if at the beginning of the trial, the judge said, well, you know, I, I think this car is lemon too. And I'm, 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 uh, I'm gonna, uh, I'm, I'm gonna decide this matter in favor of Mr. Landis before I've heard the testimony. Of course, everyone would understand that that would be wrong and you would never see a judge do that. That's prejudgment. That's making up your mind before the hearing. All the applicants got the right to to an impartial decision. And, and I actually had this happen. I had a council member at the beginning of a hearing before any testimony say, well, I'm gonna be voting against this because I think it's, it's the wrong use for this neighborhood, whatever question was. Council member felt strongly, a fair number of his constituents were in the audience and he wanted to deliver for them. And I understand that. But let's remember, you're the judge. You get the last word. You don't have to be in a hurry to begin with. Uh, he needed to have waited. Secondly, and more importantly, he needed to have waited and listened to the evidence like any judge should and does. So certainly, I, I live in the real world. I get it that it's in a smaller community. You've got opinions about any application walks in the door and that's fine. But the key here is maintain an open mind. And tell yourself, I'm gonna listen to the evidence. I'm gonna give these people a fair chance to convince me and I'm gonna hear from the public. And, and don't telegraph your decision. I also had a council member who he didn't announce his decision, but you could tell from his questions. The, uh, when did you quit beating your dog kind of questions that that he had made up his mind again, before he'd heard all the testimony. Think about how that feels if you're an applicant or you're an opponent. Either way. And it's clear before you even finish the hearing that council member X has made up their mind. So why should I bother testifying? Why don't, why did they even open this hearing? Uh, enormously frustrating and wrong. And as I said, you, you've got the last laugh on this. So it's not like you've got to hurry up and say how you feel. Because you're gonna have your chance and you're gonna have it at the end. Lastly, impact of social media. Uh, especially now that your social media is monitored and recorded. The occasional, uh, the tweeting of something, the occasional email saying, yeah, I saw that application that came in. You get an email from someone, I saw that application that came in. That's a woofer. I sure am not in favor of that. And you send that email out. That email is now in the world. And if I am the, uh, applicant's attorney, I'm delighted to get that email because I'm gonna introduce that in evidence in the hearing. And I'm gonna say that based upon that, you clearly prejudged, because you wrote it down and sent it out in the world. And you've got to step down. And if you don't, the decision of the, uh, commission on this application is gonna be invalid. And that's, that's, so think very carefully for you to, uh, comment on a pending matter on social media. No judge would. And again, remember the hat you're wearing. It is in fact a judge's hat. Bringing in some perennial issues, uh, and we're doing well on time. So now's a good chance for uh, some additional questions, hopefully pertaining to material we've just covered, which is exactions, conditions, and your quasi judicial role, the ex parte contact, judgment, kinds of questions. Do we have any on that subject?
Yeah, this is Sean. I, I do have a couple of questions on that. Um, my, my first question is, if someone attempts to reach out to us, they, they send an email, they post on my Facebook page with their thoughts on a particular application. And I don't respond to it. I don't acknowledge it. Does, does that still put me in a compromised position just by virtue of someone having sent it to me or someone having seen that somebody posted on my wall something about it, even though I didn't respond?
Good question. I appreciate it. No. Uh, uh, an appropriate response is either no response, because then you can, you can absolutely say at the hearing, uh, people post a lot of things, but, but, uh, I haven't, uh, responded. Uh, that's one good response. The next one is to have sort of a stock response. Thank you very much. Uh, uh, I'm, uh, sharing this with staff and encourage you to come to the hearing. You know, and that's like a stock response you have. And after a while, people kind of get it. They go, oh, I'm not, you know, Sean's on to me. I'm, she's not gonna play that game. I'm not, I'm not gonna trap him. And, and, uh, with any luck, sometimes that starts falling off a little when they realize that your stock response is, uh, thank you, I, I'm, in fact, you can even say, I'm not responding on the advice of the town attorney, the town attorney, I know, tonight is listening. Hopefully he'll agree. And, and, uh, I urge you to come to the hearing virtually otherwise and express your opinions. And that's, that's all you need to do.
Okay. And even a stock response or a non-response are equally effective in terms of not putting me in a compromising position?
That's correct. Yep. Yeah. You can't help it. The people send you stuff. You know, uh, you just, you, you, your mailbox is open. Uh, for things that, uh, look a little substantive, you might want to forward that to staff. But, but the Facebook pages are, uh, a really interesting kind of one-way street almost. That are a little different than the kinds of things in the old days. Get letters. And I'd always tell people to give those letters to staff, but things have morphed a little bit. And I think the courts understand that.
Okay, great. And then you've got one other question, and that is, where is it appropriate to talk to a friend or family member about a particular um, application? Because like after we have our meeting and we vote on it, it'll be in the paper. Uh, at that point, are we okay to talk, talk about it?
Most of the time, yes. Uh, the caveat to that and the, the reluctance you hear in my voice is, is this rarely, but it does happen. Rarely, the board of trustees will re-refer an application back down to the planning. And we're, but we're not. Uh, so I uniformly answered, and I've gotten this question before, I uniformly say, wait until it's the, the board of trustees is active. Whenever that is. And you, you can keep track of that or you can ask staff to tell you. Because then you know that there's no chance it's gonna land back on your desk. Now, I'm a lord, I get it that nine times out of 10, it's not coming back down. But I have seen it in my Wheat Ridge uh, uh, role. The city council has a couple of times re-referring things to planning commission because it kind of fell off the rails. You know, at the council uh, and, and, and council felt that or sometimes the applicant will ask, you know, can we uh, go back to the planning commission? Can you refer, re-refer to planning commission? Because we'd really like to take another shot at the planning commission and see if we can get their recommendation unwound. You know, for, for example, it was a planning commission recommendation in denial. I've had it happen. The applicant asks for it to go back to the commission, because what they want is a nice, clean commission recommendation before they get to city council. And so you're not always out of the woods until you know that the, the darn thing's done after the, the board of trustees acts. So I, I, I wait until then to, to start talking to people.
Makes sense. And I believe you firmly that that situation can occur.
Yeah, yeah, it, uh, it, it does. And sometimes it's, you know, the applicant, they're in charge of their ship. And they're in charge of the strategy and tactics of trying to get some, you know, the city to say yes. And one strategy might be to have to go back to the planning commission.
Yeah. Does it make sense? All right. Thank you, Jerry.
You bet. You bet.
Hey Jerry, this is Bill Lewis. I've got a quick question. I, I want to throw out extractions. And what's our limitation when it comes specifically to schools? So when we say school dedications, I'm guessing that means land.
Yes, and, and, uh, the code typically will will either govern that or it, the, the school district will have a little formula that they ask in the subdivision arena that they ask for you to request uh, or to impose as a dedication requirement on uh, on, on development. It's exclusively for a commercial, or excuse me, residential development, because that's what increases the burden, increases the school population, increases the burden on, on schools, not a commercial. The, the commercial development will produce uh, property tax revenue that schools can benefit from, but they don't need land. That, you know, is usually a formula the school district has. The, uh, uh, that's not something that you negotiate. It's usually something that, uh, is local school district formula based upon number of units.
So if, if we don't agree with the formula the school districts using, that's, that's shame on them and we have no say in that. Or can we ask a specific development because we know that their uh, their students, their families that would live there would need to send their kids to a school that needs to be upgraded or fixed? Or is that only could come from the school board?
That's really the school board's words arena. I'm glad you asked this question because it's, it's a little unique and I, I really appreciate you raising it. It's one of the, one of the places where we have kind of a shared role. And I, you, it, it's, it's really what you're asking. You know, we, 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 I say we, municipal governments have a shared role there with the school district. And, uh, it's not something that's wholly within our control. And what's interesting is really the school district is using uh, the, the local government land use review process to service and no pejorative intended here, service its goals of making sure they have uh, school facilities or the, the right land, et cetera. Uh, but it's not a formula that the city gets to, uh, create. It's one that the city will implement and say, show us where your dedication is based upon the formula the school district gives. And if the school district has screwed up its formula, uh, they're kind of the captains of their ship. And it's, it is they that have to fix that, not us.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, and I think we had a development that came to us probably 12 to 18 months ago and, and the number that the school board used was, was presented. And I think we were all pretty much shocked at how low it was for our town. So or our school district anyway. So that, that's why I wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Oh, you bet. You bet. Shall we, uh, go on to, uh, uh, perennial issues? Let's see, now, let's see, where did, where did we leave off here? We left off at, uh, uh, perennial issues, didn't we? Is that a good place to start? Let's do that. Understanding we're in good shape on time. It's, it's, uh, 7:15. We got 45 minutes and we're three quarters of the way, almost more than that through the outlines. We are right on the mine here. But let's, let's do talk about some perennial issues. To some extent, this covers a little material we've, we've covered already, but, but in somewhat different way. Uses by right in a zone district. Those are permitted. So when a site plan comes in, this is a little like the subdivision in Wheat Ridge for the in, infill. When the site plan comes in for a tire store, you don't say no to it because it's a tire store. Because tire stores, I'm making up the fact pattern, but tire stores are allowed in a commercial zone district. So if your goal is, I don't want to see a tire store there, that's an improper motivation to say no. Cause the decision on whether tire stores get to be here already got made when that. When that property was zoned for commercial. And in the book, in the book, I keep saying in the book, meaning the land use code. Tire stores or general commercial uses are allowed, uses by right in commercial districts. We can like that or not like that as a planning commission member. We can like that or not like that. As a planning commission member on this particular site. And the hard news I have to give you is that's too bad. You don't get to rewrite the land use code on the spot. Uh, because you don't want that tire store or you don't want tire stores generally. Uh, that's, um, a decision for the board of trustees when they rewrite the code. And certainly you can make lots of recommendations to them on rewriting the code. But it's not something we can do on this application. Uh, you will get the flip side too. You will, and I'm looking at number two here, you'll, you'll get someone saying, well. I've got the right to the highest and best use of my property. And if you don't say yes to this. Uh, it's a taking and I'm going to sue you. Well, no, there is no right to the highest and best use of property, only a reasonable use. And the courts are clear about that. They've been clear about that for decades in Colorado. There's just no issue with that. Uh, we'd all like the highest and best, most valuable use of our property. I'd like to be able to build that tannery next to your house if it makes me more money than a house. But I don't have the right to the highest and best use of that. If I'm in a residential district with you. I've got the right to a house next to me. And it's not a taking. For the government to say, Jerry Doll, you've got to stick with the house. You can't build, uh, the tannery. Cause as screen says, the zoning by its nature does take away some uses and leaves others. That's the business we are in. Uh, sometimes you'll hear people say, well, I've got a vested right to do this. Uh, that's an interesting doctrine, uh, until the nineties, early nineties in Colorado vested rights meant. Uh, and what a vested right means is you can't change the rules on me. It's too late to change the rules. Uh, I've already got a house here. You can't tell me I can't have one. And the, it's important that, that, um, we remember that, that that's true. The legislature has changed that a little bit. Uh, in the last, whatever it is, it's the early nineties, legislature enacted a statute said, okay. Uh, vested rights means that once, uh, like a final plat is approved. Then that can't be unwound for three years. Uh, that statute is hardly ever relied on. Uh, typically the whole common law vested rights was once you've pulled the building permit and spent money. That you're right to do whatever it is you pulled the building permit for vested and, and couldn't be, uh, unwound by, by the government. We don't see those kinds of problems happen much any longer of vested rights issues. It just was a big deal in the early nineties, but it doesn't seem to be anymore. Once in a while you get someone saying, hey, I've got vested rights, uh, to do this. If you get that kind of argument, absolute way to deal with it is to share that with the town attorney. Who will sift through that and, and quite likely they're just using the term. But they really haven't been, there's really not the kind of vested right that would preclude you from taking whatever action. Uh, you, you need to take. Uh, let's talk about something that's near and dear to my heart, uh, and that's your roles and responsibilities. Not so much around the quasi judicial, et cetera, but just how, how do you behave? And what's the, what is the image? That you want to present to the public and we, we don't get to do it in person anymore. With any luck this year, we'll start getting to do it again. But this is true both for Zoom meetings and, and for in-person meetings. And as I said, I've been going to meetings now for decades upon decades and, and I have. On a meetings at the state legislature, at county governments, at big cities and at little towns. And interestingly, uh, they all share most of these, these. Concerns I have about your roles and responsibilities. Because, uh, we began this by me saying, you have a product you deliver and the product you deliver is, is, uh. Helping to make certain that your community is safe and we can all live together i- in a way that doesn't usually interfere with one another. Another product that I should have mentioned at the beginning, I'm saying it now, is you are, uh, you're presenting. The, the image of we're, we're government to the people that show up. And you're presenting an image that is, uh, disciplined, it's, it's, uh, polite. It's respectful and it's thoughtful. And, uh, that's different than what we are, get to be as individual human beings. I can be, or I can be irritable, uh, in my private life. I can be harsh, I can cut people off, I can tell jokes that are, uh, out of order. I can, I can wander from the topic of the discussion into things that are irrelevant. And I can do all that as a private citizen, perfectly fine. But I'm wearing my government hat. I have responsibility to, uh, not behave that way. Because what I'm providing and producing for the public is a respectful image of their government. Uh, something I truly believe is this, very often, some of the people you see in a meeting, the only time. They will ever experience directly the town of Monument Government is in that one meeting. Their entire impression of the town of Monument and its government are going to be formed. By how you behave in that one half hour. That's it. Same thing's true of municipal court. I occasionally go to municipal court. The cities I represent, just to kind of watch the demeanor of the judge and. Part of my job, report back to the council on how the judge is portraying the image of the community. And I'm happy to say the judges that I work with are. They're very good about that because they have five minutes with the person. For the next case and that five minutes is going to determine how that person feels about the whole government. Uh, of that community, because that's their only experience with it. That's the predicate for the things I'm about to cover here on roles and responsibilities. Uh, to begin with, you have the role of the chair and I had the, uh, privilege to spend a half hour on the phone with your chair. Uh, and, uh, he and I had a good chat and it was very helpful to me and kind of helping me prepare. And I know I want to take the chance right now to thank you for that. Uh, and, uh, the chair is really the role model for the rest of you. And, uh, the role of the chair is so very important. Uh, I had a mayor at one time who was a pretty nice person. But she did not understand that her role was the air traffic controller. What does an air traffic controller do? They worry about the plane that's about to land, not the one that's already landed. This person would listen to a, a, a witness and the witness would finish. And she'd still be thinking about what the witness said and illuminating on it and that's all great. And thirty people in the room were waiting for her to remember. That it was her job to call the next witness or to move on or to ask for a motion. There's all this dead air while we're kind of waiting for that to happen. You're an air traffic controller as the. As the chair and once a plane has landed, as it's landing, you're thinking about where to go next. And you keep things moving. It's not that we need to hurry. It's just that people's time is valuable and you, you want to kind of organize the meeting. So the chair is the air traffic controller and you'll watch a good chair. I'm sure this chair does it do exactly that. Uh, and the chair can expiate discussion. I, my analogy for this is back in the old days when we could actually go to cocktail parties together. Uh, if you've ever noticed this, every twenty minutes or so, there's a little silence, right? In the conversation of twenty people. And there's a little moment there where you've got a chance to go in a different direction. Same thing is true. And the discussion after the public hearing is over and you're now discussing it and you're getting ready to make an action. There's these, conversation will kind of cover the topic and then there's a little break. And, and there's a magic time when, when really you're ready to act, but unless there's a motion. You might be plowing the same ground again. Now, I'm always ready to hear any more opinions that are new ones or comments that are new ones. But at some point, we're kind of repeating ourselves and I'm as guilty of it as anybody else. And a good chair will recognize that, that magic moment and say, well, I'll entertain a motion. And by gosh, then you're off to the races. Uh, you can do that too soon and a good chair knows. Sometimes the discussion's just got to happen. We've got to get this out on the table. Uh, but, but there's always a right time, uh, to act. And as a participant, of course, you've got, you've got. Um, this, the same. Options and opportunities, chair to kind of see that and to say, well, I'll make a motion on this. Uh, so, uh, I want to talk a little bit about taking testimony and conduct in, in public hearings. Uh, you, as I said, you've got a huge impact. Uh, you're the only officials of the town, possibly the people. And so the most important goal, and I put it in bold face cap, is that people leave the feeling here and, hearing, feeling it was fair. And they were heard and appreciated. People get it, that there's a fifty percent chance that their, the outcome isn't going to be what they support. We all know that, you know, we live in a democracy and we, we get it how voting works and we don't always win. And we understand that. But really frost people is if you go to a hearing and they feel that they were not even heard. That really irritates people. Losing is expected about half the time. But not being heard, that's why you had the hearing doggone it. You published a notice of hearing and you said, everybody come. And then at the hearing. Uh, member X is on his phone and texting and. Uh, enormously frustrating. I was a lobbyist at the car municipal league for six years. And I would go to committee hearings at the state house. And I'd sit in a local government committee hearing and, and, uh, some witness would have driven in from Sedgwick. On the eastern plains and driven in three hours to give five minutes of testimony and drive home three hours. And that person's representatives would be sitting there in the hearing, reading the paper. While they were testifying. Now, I was a lobbyist and I kind of expected the legislators to not have to pay as much attention to me. They knew who Jerry Doll from the car in this league was and they kind of already knew what my position was. But I was embarrassed on, on behalf of those legislators for. How they treated the average citizen. And, uh, as you can tell, that really affected me and it has stuck with me forever. So, yes, it's true. You know what that person is going to say because you've seen Ed in the hearing before. And it's a small town, you know who he is. Uh, you've, you've heard, you've heard this all before and you're a little impatient. Uh, remember what you said yes to at the beginning of this talk here? You said yes to the role of judge. And that means you said yes to having the role of getting the brass bottom award and just sitting there. And listening, even if you think you know everything they've said. And even if it's the third witness or tenth to say the same thing. Now, the chair will always say, you're welcome to not repeat what others have said. You're welcome to, you know, I encourage you. To, to say you agree with the person in front of you, uh, and they never will do that. And the reason they won't is because to them it's personal. And yes, other people have said it, but this is me. And, and it's as important for you, for me, for, for, for me to kind of be counted. And I practiced in front of the bathroom mirror last night. And so don't tell me that just because someone else said more or less the same thing, I don't have the right to. And you don't have the obligation to listen to me just as carefully as you listened to the first three. It's hard to do. You know, you're there every two, every other Wednesday night or whatever, whatever night it is. And this is their, you've done this many times before. This is the only time potentially that person has. And you really need to consider all the testimony and evidence. Uh, you're not, uh, it's not an applauseometer. Where if there's thirty people in favor of the application and two against, then you vote yes. If, if that were the case, we didn't, we wouldn't need you. We just have an applauseometer. And we just count whoever showed up. Uh, I had a commissioner once, a very thoughtful person say, you know, I worried just as much about the people that didn't show up. Uh, as the people that do. And there's such a temptation, isn't there, to kind of go with the crowd tonight? The crowd tonight's a tiny fraction of the citizens in the community. Uh, and this planning commission is pretty thoughtful and, and she said to me that she. Cared just as much about the people that weren't there. And I, I was enormously, uh, impressed by that. Lastly, the role of the staff. And I've talked about this, uh, before, you know, they're, they're your staff. They're your, uh, you have free professional advice. That you should take as much advantage of as you possibly can. And, and that, uh, mayor from Wheat Ridge that would call me up ahead of time. And I would do research because he had all these questions, but I was glad to do it because it really, it did two things. It saved me having to, to, to do a poorer job of the advice on the spot in the hearing. And thereby giving him less information. And it allowed him to acquire much better, uh, information than he, than. Otherwise. And so I was pleased to act as a staff. That's why you have a staff. So I have a staff report. Got questions about the staff reports? You get the packet? Call them up, ask them. Uh, it could well be that there might be a question you asked that. Didn't anticipate in the staff report, but now that you've asked them ahead of time. They'll, uh, add that, I'm not telling staff to do this, but I've seen it happen. Staff will say, in addition to staff report, there were three questions I got from commissioners on. On question on issue number whatever, I want to add. That here's what to think about that. So beyond just answering your question, it can be very helpful for the other members of the, of the, of the commission. Bringing us to the last topic, which is taking action and surviving judicial review. Now you've heard, you say some of these things already. You compare the application, you compare the evidence you heard against the standards of the code. Uh, and again, you stick with the code, you know, get to rewrite it on the spot. You're stuck with the code as written. Uh, you can certainly suggest that it get fixed, but not on this application. And you got three doors. When you're done, when you're all done, you approve it, you approve with the conditions or you deny. Uh, conditional approval. I know this is a very important topic in the community. The staff sent me examples of conditions that have been applied. Recommended by staff and some that have been those by the commission in the past. And I've got some views on that. I expect, since we're going to have almost half hour here in a minute when I'm done. Questions that you'll have questions about that. Let me at least at the beginning tell you that you've got the ability to impose conditions as part of the action, only again within the limits of the code. They've got to be reasonable. They have to relate to the project. They have to be based on the code or if it's like all the comp plan, but. Primarily based on the code. And let me elaborate on that a little. They need to be objective and capable of being implemented. And, uh, luckily, I don't know who, uh, uh, recommended a condition about. Well, we would like the app to consider something. But to be very frank and blunt, that condition isn't, is subjective to begin with. It doesn't achieve the goal, does it? Because I'm the applicant. Yeah, I considered it. Thank you very much. Uh, you're either saying, in my opinion, if you've got the ability to do a condition on a topic. You either apply the condition that says this shall happen. Or you don't. Considering doesn't make it, doesn't make it happen, number one. Number two. It has to be something within the power of the applicant to do. Uh, but again, is within the code. Uh, so, so I think carefully about that. Um, returning to a topic I. You know, addressed early on, conditions can't really redesign a non-compliant project, project. You know, doggone it, this is really a square peg and the code requirements are a round hole. There's just not enough rasping we can do on the rough edges of this application to make it fit. Number one. And number two, it isn't our job to do the rasping. Uh, you know, a rasp is like. You know, this rasp is like a file, but for wood. It's very rough and it takes a lot of wood off every stroke and it's it's you know, used to smooth things. Um, but uh, uh, you don't really, it's it's not your application. The applicant had the right uh and the privilege to uh to make mistakes or to give you the application that they felt was right for them. And on balance, you're saying yes or no to that. Uh, so going on with what your actions are, um, state your conclusions in the motion, taking the action, that's good findings. You can incorporate the staff report and I think some of the recommended motions that I've seen in your staff reports do that. I recommend approval for the reasons set forth in the staff report and this following additional reason. Dynamite, that's that's great. Uh, but remember, you can't, you're not writing a new code requirement and then applying it to the project. Don't lose thought of sight of that. Write it down and later send a email to staff of the board trustees saying, you know, long after this project was finally approved for that earlier question, I've got a thought about what the code says on this and I think it ought to be fixed and here's what I think. Dynamite, that's what you do with that, rather than weighing it on an individual project. Continuances, uh, meaning continuing the hearing. It's really okay if you need more information, you continue the hearing to further date where you can hear from another witness or you can get that study or the fire department can weigh in. It's not okay really to it, there's a lot of pressure out there in the public to say no to this project. And so we're continuing it more to see if it'll just go away. Remember, the applicant has a right to a timely decision. Say yes or say no, but say something. And so does the public. And sometimes decisions are hard. Uh, but if if you've got all the information you're going to have, it's going to be eventually time just to say yes. Uh, if you close the hearing and continue it for action, that works. So you can think about it. But here's the risk, and I know your town attorney would agree with this. The risk is that on the day you reconvene to make the decision, that's not a hearing, right? It didn't get posted as a hearing. And the temptation will be and the pressure will be to hear from more people because people will show up and they'll sign up because they see it on the agenda and they're going on to talk about it. And you're going to have to say no unless you republish a whole hearing. So think carefully about that. It's a tool you can use, but you have to be tough when it comes to that night to actually make the decision. You've got to say, I'm, we're not taking any testimony. Hearing got closed two weeks ago, we're just here to vote. Let's talk about amendments to motions and motions. Uh, on amendments to motions, they they have to pertain to the subject of the motion, obviously. Usually it's not a problem. And and it's a good way to add one or a series of conditions. And this question was raised to me by the staff and I'm glad I got the question because I've I've used this trick and the legislature's for all their ills, they're really good at this. Let's say there's three of you, each have a different condition you want to apply to this project. But you're not sure that that if if your condition, you're not sure your condition's gonna gonna fly or one of you tries to make a motion with all three conditions, the motion maybe is likely to fail because of condition number two, but people like numbers one and three. But because they're connected, because they're all part of a package, you don't have a choice, you got to vote no or yes on the whole package and that doesn't work for people. Here's a really great trick and I've seen the uh chairs of legislative committees, they use this commonly. In fact, they they always use it. They will take the main motion. I move to approve the rezon from A one to C two uh proposed by Jerry Doll. And uh, it's clear from the discussion that there's a desire to have conditions on that motion or amendments to the motion. And so they'll say, that's the motion. I'll now entertain uh motions to amend. And uh, they do this all the time for legislature and the committee members will say, uh, uh, I'd like to amend the main motion to add uh X, Y, Z. Uh, that's fine, that gets seconded, they vote on that amendment. Amendment either goes on or it fails. Okay, any other amendments? Take the next one, take the next one. And the chair would go around and knock off all the amendments. And it's a little like a Christmas tree. You get the the tree and then you start hanging ornaments on it. And some ornaments make it onto the tree and some don't. By the time you're done going through the ornaments one by one as opposed to in groups, they're either on the tree or they're not. And the chair would say, any other, any further amendments? Okay, fine. Motion as amended is this, and it's the main motion that got amended with like amendments numbers one, three and five, because two and four failed. And then we vote on that whole package. And that's, that works. Now, I can certainly do it differently. You can say, I move to amend and let's add through, or I move to approve and let's have three. Uh, you know, let's, I move to approve with the following three different unrelated things. But of course, you run the risk. The second unrelated thing is the thing that defeats it. Whereas if that second thing were on its own, it would go down and the other two would go up. See what I'm trying to do, which is a trick that you can use if it looks like it's a little confusing here and there are two or three different things people want to have voted on. There are little pieces that aren't the whole game. Get a main motion going, which then is your platform on which to take individual amendments one at a time until you're all done. And and then you can vote on the emotion as amended. That's a trick and it's not a trick, it's a procedure that really works uh well. If the motion fails, it means no recommendation to the order trustees, so if it does fail, or a tied motion means the motion fails. And so whoever is on the prevailing side ought to immediately move what they want. And that way you at least get a recommendation, produce the product that you need to produce, which is a recommendation to order trustees. Now we're repeating a few things. You stick to the request in front of you. If in terms of relevance of evidence and what you're saying about a project, stick to the same standards you'd want to see out of the public and stick to this application. If it's a site plan application, you don't question the use. It's a site plan for a tire shop. It's used by right, that tire shops are not questioning that. If it's a rezoning case, you don't engage in site planning and the reverse is true as well. If it's a subdivision or site plan, you don't say, I don't like the use. Uh, you've heard me say the applicants in charge of its mission. Uh, the way to succeed in judicial review courses is if the decision you made can find a home in elements of the of the code book as opposed to stuff you'd like to see in the code book, but isn't there yet. I've given you the reasons that you can lose. Uh, and you've heard them from me already. Generally, the courts won't substitute their judgment for for yours. So make a good motion for approval or denial with as many reasons as as you can. Bringing us to conflicts of interest, which it's it's which is a topic uh for an entire session. But the the few things I do say is consult the town attorney ahead of the meeting if you think you've got a conflict. Uh, because you'll get a whole lot better legal advice. Uh, because it's thoughtful and all, you know, I really appreciate it when council members come to me and say, do I have a conflict because my brother-in-law is the applicant uh or not? And you know, I can have that conversation with them privately then and it's much better advice. If you do have a conflict, you disclose it at the beginning, you step down and you don't vote. And our statutes say that, that if you do have a conflict, uh, which is usually a financial conflict, required to step down in the language of our established actions and refrain from influencing the other members voting on the matter. Well, what does that mean? I'm not sure what the Senate committee meant when it added that to the statute. I was in the room when they did that. Uh, but what I do in terms of, in order to comply with that, is I ask the member to just leave the room. Sometimes members will say, well, what if I, can I stand here on the dais and be quiet? Can I sit in the front row? Does that mean I I'm conflicted, but I can testify at the podium? The answer to all those things are no. If you leave the room, there's nobody that can say that you tried to influence the result because you weren't there. That's lying by far and away the best way to uh handle a conflict of interest that is has been declared to be true, that you disclosed on the record, that's all good. It's the beginning of the hearing, say, Mr. Chairman, I'm out of here because of this. And then you're, you leave the room and you go have some coffee and look at the phone and I'd be delighted that you get a little break. Uh, thus ends the outline that we've done and I'm happy to take questions. So hit me with them.
Jerry, this is Sean again. Yeah. So uh, things like utilities and traffic, particularly traffic, um, are are buttons um for the public and and for commissioners. And um, you know, I I have a civil engineering undergrad and I took a traffic, introductory traffic engineering course. And what it showed me is I don't know how to do traffic. But it's very complex and I hardly feel like I'm in a position as a as a commissioner, even with one course, to make recommendations based on traffic. But oftentimes that's coming up as a reason to either condition or disapprove in a particular application. Now, the town staff does a great job of coordinating all of the applications with people who actually are experts in that. And then those experts say, yes, this this road is appropriate for this development, the new traffic, it can be supported. Um, so how do we deal with that? I mean, either as commissioners or the public are saying, the traffic is going to be unacceptable for this road. It's going to be dangerous. We hear that a lot. It's going to be too dangerous. Kids are going to be getting run over in the street. Um, how do we do it?
Uh, I'm glad you asked the question. That is, you're right, that's one of the fulcrums, the focal points of the 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 friction points, isn't it? So often on any new development, people get it that the development's going to happen, but it's going to be traffic. And uh, they they have, they live with their kind of lived experience. You know, there's the traffic expert, right? But then there's the lived experience of the people who live on that block and they will tell you, people drive this way and they always turn and you know, they're right because they live there and they watch it. Uh, a couple of things. Um, the the, I suppose the easy answer is you've got a traffic study that says that it's the at at full development with the improvements, the XL, DCL lane, whatever they're going to do, that it will remain at level C or B or, you know, I think that, you know, you know, they do A through whatever E level service. Yeah. And uh, one of your doors, I think, is for play appropriate, this is the easy part of the question. I'll get to the hard one in a minute because it's a hard question. One of the doors is approved based upon the traffic study and you refer to it. So that at least you've tied and you've tied that down now. You've got basically the evidence for your decision. Your, whether people like it or not, that's a pretty bulletproof uh way to connect up your decision as it would be for lots of other topics, but especially this. A harder question that I think you're asking, even if you aren't, I want to answer it because it's fair to ask it. Yeah, I know the traffic study says this. But in my own kind of lived experience and what I'm hear from hearing from the neighborhood, this is one of those times that I think the traffic experts have run the numbers. The doggone it, the the real life experience might not be that good. And I just don't fully think I'm there. Uh, I think staff mayor may not agree with me on this, but I think that you have the right, if you, if if you, if you believe you must, to say, uh, uh, no, based upon my um belief uh, from reviewing all of the evidence, that the the, there is a a continuing potential for unacceptable traffic hazards and you know, uh, trying to think of a good way to say it. So what you, you see what I've done there is to to not say the experts are wrong in what they said. That, yeah, it might be level service, whatever, but I, as a commissioner, am departing from that and seeing a slightly larger picture, which is that uh uh based upon the totality of the project, I believe there's a, there is a substantial a potential for uh traffic hazards. And and the and you're sort of acting a little bit like a layperson, right? But you get to, because you are a layperson, you know? And if if you're gonna not rely on the traffic, if if you're gonna have to take, if you feel you need to take a position that is heartfelt, I mean, you're not using traffic to say no, right? As an excuse, okay, I I'm going to assume for the person's question, I I know it's true, that you really, you have continuing concerns. Traffic study said this and the experts say this, but I have continuing concerns. You have the right to express those and to make your decision based on that uh and to say so. I would do it sparingly because uh, as you can tell, I believe in experts. I really do, you know, on, and their role is important and the information they give us is important. Uh, and that's why most of the time I'm going to say, okay, traffic study looks like it's it's good. Uh, we're good here. But if the, if the uh traffic study were required by the code to be determinative of your decision, we wouldn't need you, would we? And so there will be times when you say the traffic study is one component of what I bring to bear on the issue of traffic here. And I'm like, I respect it, you know, but it's only one component. And and I believe, and you see what I've done here, I've been kind of tiptoeing through the tulips a little bit because I have to. You know, you got a a traffic study that says it's okay. So if I, if I really am not completely convinced by that, uh, I need to structure my motion in a way that's that's honest, right? And and says, you know, despite the traffic study, I have continuing concerns that that the traffic impacts are not fully addressed. And it is for that reason I'm saying no, or I'm saying yes with a condition that's code-based. You have the room to do that. You're you're doing it judiciously and carefully and not as a reason to just kind of uh actually say no because the it's, you don't like the project and you're using it as an excuse.
Sure.
But uh hopefully that's responsive to what you've said. You didn't ask the difficult question, but I I think you deserve the answer to the difficult question.
Yeah, it absolutely did. And and Jerry, it surprises me. I did not expect that answer to, to be honest. Um, but with that, there's a thread there on the sweater now, but if you pull it.
Yeah. That's, that's why I said, yeah, that's why I was afraid. But if I'd done anything less, if I'd said to you, if the traffic study says yes, you must say yes. Uh, I don't, you you know, I, I, yeah. So go ahead, we're, go ahead and pull the thread and we'll make it even worse.
Yeah, so um, you know, based on that principle, you could, you know, this this proposed golf course, I believe is going to deplete our limited water resources in in the in the aquifer that we have. Um, substantive, it it won't be able to support um the population here. Even though experts have said, analyzed and said, no, we think it's it's good. I mean, I don't think the drainage is going to be adequate. Um, school district, I know the school district said that there's, they can handle it, but I think there's only more kids than they think. I mean, there's lots of ramifications you can, you can go with that principle.
There there are, and and I don't want to make this a uh an exception you can drive a truck through, you you know, where 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 you, where you have a code provision that that says your latitude is to decide on traffic impacts, the impact of uh, traffic as being um compatible with the community or with the neighboring community. That compatibility might be a slightly different thing than the level of service remaining at C at intersection X. You see what I'm saying? Yes, and and for that reason, it allows you, I think it gives you a little latitude there. I would be careful about it. I know the staff is, as we, as we speak here, the staffs are going, thanks a lot, Jerry Doll. But uh, but if if I were to say, you have to go with the experts every time on every subject, that the truth is, in real life, people aren't going to anyhow. And and uh, that that there's kind of a limit to what the X, what what the uh, the the reports cover. If the report says it'll be level of service C, I would, I would rely on the fact that it's going to be level service C and I wouldn't say, I think it's going to be D. I would, I would rely on the fact that it's going to be level service C. And I wouldn't say, I think it's going to be D. You know, because, because you know, that's why you hire those experts. But because the code provision on that, and I've seen it, is slightly broader than just maintaining level of service. I think that gives you room. If the code provision said, however, the standard for traffic has to be that it remains a level of service C and you've got a report that says it will. I, then the, what I'm trying to articulate is the scope of your code requirement is, is no broader and is as narrow and as consonant with the report you've got. I don't think you have any room there. But code standards are in some cases more subjective and slightly broader, giving you a little room. But the point I want to make is a little room. And that's why your job's hard. The easy thing to do in your job would be, well, there's a little room here, so I'm gonna pretend there's a lot. And you know, that's wrong too. It, that's why I know that as staff, and I've sat, you know, I sit at staff tables, you know, twice a week for various cities. And, and especially on things like water supply, traffic, et cetera. You want it, you want the drainage sometimes. Yes, this culvert size big enough, we're done. And usually we are, you know. Hopefully I'm, I'm telling you that the main reason, the main answer is you really should respect the experts and give them the respect that they deserve and give the weight to their evidence that it deserves. And it's a whole lot better than the weight of someone who comes in and says, yeah, I hear them, but it's, I don't know. I think they're completely wrong. It's going to be level service F. You know, you gotta give weight to those experts, but they're to the extent that there is some latitude in the code standard that I think you're allowed to rely on that latitude. But you have to do it, you have to do it with, with, what's the right word? With respect is not the right word. You have to to do it, but you have to play fair with it and not to use it, you know, as an excuse to just, you know, completely ignore the evidence. Sorry for that long answer. I could have made it a lot simpler by saying, no, when the experts say it, you're done.
Right.
But I, in good conscience, I couldn't do that.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you, Jerry.
Yep, you bet. Other questions?
This is Steve King.
Come on, we got time.
I'd like to, I'd like to come back to my question that I started with the beginning.
Oh, I thought you'd have a new one.
I thought you had a new one. Come on. I've got lots of new ones, but I'll let other people talk.
Okay.
So I guess what I'm referring to more is like a PUD. Uh, because, because our zoning hasn't really gone through our, our code changes yet. You know, most of the stuff that's coming in is, is like a PUD, it's like a hybrid. They, they want to continue with keeping the existing uses and then add uses to them. And that's more what I'm referring to. So that's where I'm talking more about the negotiation. So if they want those extra things, then we can say, that's fine, but we want to reduce this or add this.
That's acceptable. That's more fair. That's more fair. I appreciate that. Uh, for a, for a PUD application where there's lists of uses, um, I have seen local government say, I'm going to, recommendation approval with the with the, without uses, you know, five, six and seven, because I think they're inconsistent with the cop plan. Um, the, you know, let's lose tannery, let's lose this and let's lose this. Um, and that's the recommendation we're making. Uh, what I think you can't, and that's only by the way in PUD land. Right?
Right.
Straight zoning district land. Uh, I've asked for R two. You can say yes, or you can say no to R two, but you can't say yes to R two, but I want to change the list of uses allowed by writing R two for this property. You can't do that, right?
I understand that, right? Yep, absolutely.
Okay, we're not, okay. I'm glad we got that as a good starting point. For, for, for PUD and, and one caveat is after this call, I want to go back to what our new code says around that, terms of uses, but, but there's room there. And I've seen that recommendation happen. Uh, the, what was the other thing I wanted to mention? Uh, yes. Um, what you can't do is use the word nego is, you could use the word negotiate, but you can't act on it in the following way, which is, okay, developer, uh, if you say, if you, um, if, if you will exclude, if you will agree to exclude tannery from this PUD, uh, I'll say yes. Will you agree to do that? No, that's not something you get to do. I, I have seen people say, well, uh, this is my motion. I'm going to move to approve the application with the deletion of this. But sort of the back and forth, okay, let's roll up our sleeves. It's time to dicker on this thing is not okay. It's kind of a one-way street, you know?
I understand that. Yep.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. Interestingly, and, and Steve, I'm glad you raised, it's another kind of tough question that, that, uh, that I'll lay on myself, but I'm glad you gave me the chance to. You'll get applicants that will come in and it's a zoning decision and they'll show you all these elevations, right? Of imaginary buildings, right? With like pedestrians and, you know, trees and things. And that isn't part of the submission requirements. That, that's not why we're here, right? And, and, uh, uh, it's, it's something that I've, I've seen them say, well, we're going to do this, this and this. And it's important, in my opinion, not to include the this, this, and this is conditions of this particular approval. Because it really isn't, that isn't what's, that's not the application in front of you. That's kind of a sales pitch. And with no pejorative intended, I mean, if I were to go up, probably do the same thing because I want you to be comfortable with the rezoning. So I'm going to show you what I'm thinking I'm going to build after site plan approval, but we're not at site plan approval. Uh, it's something to watch out for and to, 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 to try to lay aside in your mind. Uh, it, it's hard, but it's something to do. Thanks, Steve.
Great. Thank you very much.
You bet. Somebody else?
Chris, will you help me?
Sorry, Chris?
Yeah.
Hi, Chris.
Hey.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, real quick to follow up from Commissioner King's point there, but there is, is there anything wrong in not framing as a negotiation, but simply asking the applicant if they would be willing to do something? Like restricting or otherwise modifying? There's nothing wrong in doing that, right?
I, to be blunt, I advise against it and here's why. What's the logical outcome of that? It's the applicant saying either yes or no. And what you're then now doing is negotiating the ultimate configuration of the, of the project. And it, it's, it's, you have begun a negotiation when you do that. And, and, and I have to say that. Now, the one comfort I can give you is this, and I have seen this happen. Uh, and I, there's actually, I've done the research on it because it used to come up in my reach client all the time. People, they would be, the output would be offering conditions that they, that could not be imposed under the code. You know, and you've heard me enough now after the last two hours to know that Jerry Doll is firm in saying you can't lay something on a development that doesn't have a code basis, you know? And so, but we would get applicants that would say, yes, here's the application, but I will also do this. And that's a condition that they volunteered without being asked to. And, uh, on the record, they said they would do that. And, uh, sometimes I've gone so far as, as being the town attorney in that, in their city attorney in that circumstance, to before there's action by the board, say, I want to confirm that you've made this offer. Did you? Is that a condition that you are offering? And if I get a nice firm clear yes, as opposed to something kind of murky, as doggone it, they were saying that, but they didn't really, they were really saying it as a sales, not a, don't, don't make me do that for God's sake. But if they would say yes, then I would, I'd make a little record about that. But you'll notice I'm making a record that it's clear. We're not negotiating uh, an approval in return for what you just said you do. Um, that's as far as I would go on that level. If they offer and it's, you know, fairly concrete and it's something that can be memorialized, then confirm the offer. I would as the city attorney confirm it, or you can confirm it. I just want to make sure I heard what you said. Did you say this? That's as far as I would go in as a commissioner in asking them a question. What I would not do is say, thank you very much for your presentation. This is all great except for would you be willing to do this? I would not do that. That's, and for the reason I described, the minute you start that, you have, you have, you're, uh, you're negotiating your approval as the judge and the judges, I don't think get to do that. That's how I feel about it. And I realized that's only 30% of what you'd rather I had said. Uh, but I, I, I've got the 30 and I, I'm comfortable with the 30. I'm just not comfortable with the other 70. That's my answer to that. Thanks, Chris. Thanks also, Chris, for your time on the phone. It was really valuable to me and I appreciate you doing it.
Sure. Thank you for your time, Jerry.
You bet. Other questions? We still got two minutes, don't we? Teresa?
Hey Jerry, this is Bill Lewis. I've got one quick one and
Sure.
I've noticed that you've mentioned consulting an attorney or the, the town's attorney. More than once, you talked about your experience at these commission meetings as an attorney. Is it a requirement to have an attorney at the commission meetings? Or is it just purely a strong recommendation?
It's not a requirement. I had a conversation earlier today with staff just around uh, on a number of things and that included. Uh, and I think there's an intention, I don't want to speak for the tent, but there's an intention for the attorney to begin attending at least enough to, to get to know you guys a little bit. Uh, and to, to, to see some perennial issues that might come up that he'd want to give you some advice on. Uh, I don't go to, as a standard matter, I don't go to the planning commission meetings in the cities I, I represent. But I am asked by the staff and occasionally, uh, planning commission chair to attend uh, meetings where they can see a tricky one coming and they'd like to have me there. And I have found that to be helpful for me and for them. Once in a great while I get to go to a meeting and they never, and, and I'm not needed. I'm happy about that, but uh, so I think it's, to answer your question quickly, not required. There's no statute that requires it. And I don't think you have a local code that requires it. But I think it's a good idea to, for the attorney to show up at least enough that you uh, that he or she gets to know you a little bit, understands, and you naturally will have some questions that they'll answer that have answers that are useful for more than just that meeting. So that's the first thing. And secondly, uh, they will be able to see some of the issues that you face, give you that advice. Even on application number one, but that has usefulness for you and begins to establish some guardrails for you for the future. So I would highly recommend that there at least be a erratic uh, attendance. And that's how I play it with commissions for the cities I represent. And I'm happy to say that, that I've kind of got a relationship with each of them, even though it isn't the same relationship and the regular relationship I have with the Board of Local D City Council.
And I've got one other one. And if this isn't going to be quick, because I want everybody to have a chance to ask you a question that wants to, then we can defer. Maybe I can get, you know, an email from me that kind of answers it or something like that.
Sure. Of course.
My question is, so you, we have this. We, we have this whole list of approval processes and all these different organizations that these plants go through before they come to us. One of my personal frustrations here in Monument is, um, we have quite a few county roads that intertwine our city or our town. So we've actually had instances where the county is like, eh, well, you know, that's not a priority road for us yet. But yet it's going to affect the flow of, uh, traffic in and out of a property that wants to develop. And so we kind of get stuck in between whether the county is willing to address the road or if, um, we can address the property. So do we have the ability to kick projects back to the county to reconsider their position?
Well, is this a, a project in town? It's only, of course it's a project in town. It wouldn't be in front of you if, if we're in the county, right? It's a town project. Right? For project, I mean, it concerns real estate that's in town, correct?
Yes, it, it would be in town, but, but it abuts a county road.
Okay. You can, uh, you can certainly uh, because you, traffic is, and, and access is a basis for your review. You can certainly incorporate, especially if you, you know, you can certainly incorporate a, a condition that, that would you know, require coordination with the county. Uh, well, let me, let me take that back. It's a hard one.
Because it's It's going to take a while. I could take an answer another way.
Yeah, if, here's what I would do. And again, in a way, this is a little like that school district question. I'm kind of glad we had the school district question. Because you heard me say there that, look, you don't have the same kind of control over that because that's another government. You know, you don't fully own that territory. And the same is true here. You know, the county is or is not going to improve that road. Uh, and so your, your scope of authority isn't unfortunately extraterritorial, right? Scope of authority ends at the municipal boundaries. So there are some techniques we could think of, but they're not really land use code approval kinds of techniques. They're more intergovernmental techniques that, that would lend themselves better to a lengthy email from you. And I'm happy to give you a lengthy email response, I promise.
That'd be great. Thanks, Jerry.
You bet. Other questions? I know we're running a little over, but we ran a little over, I ran a little over, but I'm happy to hang in there for a few minutes if, if the staff will let us do it.
Jerry, this is Mike Foreman. One of the questions that was asked was about our town attorney being at the planning commission. And we met with, uh, Mr. Danny Hours this, this afternoon to kind of let him know. And I want to let the entire commission know that over the next two to three months, we are going to have our town attorney there. Uh, he'll attend. And then after that two or three months, uh, he'll be there on an as needed basis. So we're going to dedicate that for our planning commission to not only help them out, but you know, to help staff out too over the next two or three months.
Terrific. Uh, and, and I'm glad, uh, if I've got the moment to say this, every time I give talks like this uh, to anyone that isn't my own city, I always say, please, uh, if, if halfway through a meeting two weeks from now, if your town attorney says, here is my advice, that's what it's, a partner of mine years ago, when I was first hired out of law school, the senior partner uh, said, you know, you, you dance with the girl you brought. Which means that, you know, uh, if, if there's a question, the town attorney answers it. Uh, you gotta go with that advice. And it would be unfair to him to say, well, Jerry Doll doesn't agree with that. And and, you know, in the end, that's the continuing advice that you're going to have to rely on. And so where there's a conflict, I'm really clear about this. Where there's a conflict, you go with your town attorney's advice because it's the only, it's the only way to go. I'm, my office is always open and I take questions and, and I get questions from other attorneys and I ask them questions. We're all kind of in a municipal attorney network and we help each other out. But in the end, when you're in the But in the end, when you're in the council meeting. You need your council members to listen to you and it, it doesn't help anybody to say, well. I hear that, but Jerry Doll said I could do this. And. You know, uh, you can't, he, that's, you can't make a different bed for that poor person to lie in. He's the one that's gotta defend what you do. So that means you gotta listen to him. Hopefully not much daylight between his opinion and mine, but. Uh, we've covered a lot of tough topics and some of them were a little subjective, as you well know. And, uh. Everyone's allowed to have kind of their own take. Within the range of subjectivity and you might find a slightly different answer. You gotta go with that answer and I feel strongly about that. Thanks. Debbie?
Yep. If no one has any other questions. Oh wait, Mike Foreman has one more thing to say.
Jerry, this is Mike. Again, I, we wanted to thank you for being here and, uh, providing this education for our, uh. Board members, our, and our commissioner, commissioners and, and for our staff also. So thank you very much for doing this.
You're most welcome. Thanks for having me. It was, I'm sorry I don't see you in person, but. This year I will and, and I'll look forward to working with you with Martin on the land use card coming right up. Thanks for your time tonight.
And this workshop has been recorded and it will be put on our town's website as well. Just to let everybody know.
Thanks, Jerry. You bet. Thank you all. Thank you all. I really enjoyed it.
Thank you, Jerry. You're great.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Thanks, Jerry. Good night, everyone.
Good night.